To call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting for September 24th, Thursday morning. We will begin the meeting with any public comment. Is there any items not on the agenda that anyone would like to offer public comment on? Feel free to unmute yourself on your microphone and you can offer public comment at this time. Okay. We are seeing no one for public comment. If you would like to comment when an item is under consideration, please feel free to unmute yourself and we will recognize you in orderly fashion. We'll begin with, we will move next to our minutes from our September 17th meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from the September 17th meeting.
Well, second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on the minutes? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. We will move into the COVID-19 planning and response portion of the agenda and we have some personnel items. We're first going to begin with five items for the Transportation Office and we will turn the floor over to our Director of Transportation, Dave Lomison. Good morning, Dave.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Yes, I would like to ask the Board to consider the following: the reinstatement of Susan Warner, vehicle operator, from full-time furlough to full-time status effective September 28th, pay period 21, and also the reinstatement of Thomas Berger, vehicle operator, from full-time furlough to full-time status, also effective September 28th, pay period 21. Third, fourth, and fifth item would be to consider approval of the extension of furlough of Rhonda Kelly, Department Clerk III, Vernon Wallace, vehicle operator, and Pam Witherite, vehicle operator, through November 7th, 2020, pay period 23. The reason for the return of furlough for Susan and Thomas is of course due to the uptick in transportation needs and other things that we're going to be doing starting the week of October 5th in transportation needs. And I have two drivers out indefinitely on medical leave, so we're a little shorthanded right now. And having them both back would be a benefit to our scheduling process and keeping us from having any type of overtime or unnecessary extra time for drivers, which would be greatly helpful.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Dave. We appreciate the context there. Any questions, comments, feedback for Dave?
Good explanation.
Okay. All right. We will look then for a motion to approve those five items under Transportation.
Motion to approve the five items for the Transportation Department.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on those? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Dave, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Okay. We do have another item, which would be the consideration of the extension of temporary furloughs, partial reduction in hours for non-court related offices. And we'll turn this over to Margaret to see if there's any additional.
Thanks very much. Just wanted to ask a question of Kristen or Tom this morning. Are there any other employees still on temporary furlough status who've not been addressed in the above section for transportation? I don't know of anyone at this point, but there might be one or two that I'm not aware of. Could one of you speak to that?
I don't have my spreadsheet right in front of me, but I don't believe so. I think that was the remaining of them. There are a couple sheriff deputies, but they're more court-related that were the airport ones or the senior advisor, like Polly-type ones that haven't been brought back yet either, but those are court-related, being the sheriff. Tom, do you show any other?
This is Jerry. There are no transportation.
I'm sorry, I missed that?
There are no more transportation employees that are on furlough, other than the five listed on the agenda.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. And so, given that fact, perhaps the item is really not necessary because we've, the Board has taken action to extend their furloughs to November 7th. So I think we're all set.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Margaret. That is good news. We appreciate that. Okay. Thank you very much. So then another item for that, for COVID-related, would be an emergency management report. And this would just be to be able to receive an update when it comes to PPE and any other PPE-related discussion we might need to have. So our Director of EMA, Jeff Warren, is with us. Jeff, we'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pike. Good morning, everyone. PPE, like you said previously, most of it's been pushed out to all the various categories of folks we were providing it to. The businesses are all done. State College businesses are proceeding on with Center Region Clog has graciously offered to help and it's going to be dispensed out of the Patent Township Alpha Fire Station. Sean Kaufman, their EMA Director within Center Region is going to be spearheading that for us. They're actually going to create a drive-through process through the fire station there. And like I said, businesses are going to be receiving correspondence from them through CBICC and through Downtown State College. And they'll be handling that. We'll keep you updated on that. Otherwise, about the last thing outside of the county venue is nonprofits. I see Molly Kunkels on the call there with Center Foundation. Through meetings, through Mary Kay and the Commissioners at some of the meetings, for instance, the Hope Meeting, we've been receiving emails at our office from nonprofits and we're contacting those folks and seeing what their needs are and pushing PP out to them. So otherwise, all proceeding smoothly as planned.
Thank you, Jeff. We have, I will say from my standpoint, I've heard from businesses that have been very grateful and thankful for this. And thanks for getting these resources out to the community. It's absolutely necessary right now, so we thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Yeah, yes, Jeff. Thanks for taking care of the businesses in State College, especially Downtown State College. I know the two economic development groups right in the borough were a little space constrained, so figuring that out.
Okay. All right. Any other feedback questions, discussion on the PPE? Okay, hearing no further. One of the things we did talk about a potential about doing was a second round of PPE. And we don't, we don't need to go into a full discussion of it today, but I do think at a future meeting would be helpful to consider whether or not we would like to make an additional purchase. One of the things that we do know is that there may be some CARES Act money that we still have remaining as we get towards the end of the year. And PPE may be an allocation that we can make in a timely fashion. It's a tangible thing. And that purchase, as we know, is eligible, excuse me, through the CARES Act fund. So I think at a future meeting, again, in October, we may want to look at maybe an additional purchase, get some updating, updated quotes, as you're probably doing, Jeff, and be ready to take action on that if need be. But just wanted to take the temperature from the fellow Board members to see if there was something that we should still be proceeding with.
I think we should be ready in case there are extra dollars available.
Yeah, I think next month, for the end of next month, we should do some planning and figure out are there a little more PPE we need to purchase, what's available, et cetera. But I don't think we need to make a purchase near as large as we made earlier in the year.
Okay, that's, I would agree with that. Yeah, that was certainly quite sizable. So absolutely. Okay. All right. Excellent. Any feedback on that? Jeff, you would be, we'd be still able to make a purchase in the final weeks of the year, months of the year?
On that note, I think things should be fairly available, run into some of the hurdles we did in our initial purchase. Also, I believe we're going to find that the prices have come down a little bit. And so we'll get more bang for our buck in that regard.
Okay, excellent. Okay. All right. Thank you again, Jeff. We appreciate it very much. Have a good day. Thank you. Okay, we are going to go into personnel items and we have several items from the Correctional Facility. We have 13 in total. Chris, you're still with us. Is there anything that you want to add to these? Many of them are routine items, but anything you wanted to highlight for any of these items?
I think the one that I'd like to highlight is 12 and 13, changing our standard lieutenant position. We have a seventh lieutenant that we're looking to fill to change the job title to an administrative lieutenant and give him more duties towards the administrative with our innovations that we brought into the facility to be able to monitor those on a regular basis and not pull him away from his regular lieutenant's position. There's other avenues that we have our traditional security lieutenants doing that takes away from their everyday job. So we can condense that into the administrative lieutenant. There's no pay increase. He'll also be doing his lieutenant position, but mostly he'll be taking care of a lot of the mental health. What we do, we meet with the mental health patients weekly, so he'll be involved with that, as well as taking care of our investigations, our hearings, our misconduct hearings, any other investigations and so forth. He'll be able to handle and allow the other security lieutenants to be able to take care of their daily, day-to-day jobs. So that's, that's only two things I want to really highlight on that that's a position I feel that we need to have here and ask the Board for approval.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions, feedback on those two items or any of the other Correctional Facility items on the agenda?
None.
No questions.
Okay. We then look for a motion to approve all 13 items.
Motion to approve the 13 items for the Correctional Facility.
I will second that.
It has been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Thank you, Warden. Have a good one. Okay, we have Human Services items. We have an MHID and Aging item. We do just want to see if we have anybody from those offices on the line with us. Looks like we do not. But we would just essentially look for a motion to approve the Personnel Requisition for a Full-Time Case Worker. And that would be in the Case Worker Two in the MHID Office. We'd also be looking at the approval of the Personnel Requisition for a Full-Time Apprise Ombudsman in the Coordinator in the Aging Care Office. So we'd be looking for a motion for those two items in Human Services.
Motion to approve the Personnel Requisition for a Full-Time Case Worker Two in MHID and to approve the Personnel Requisition for a Full-Time Apprise Ombudsman Coordinator in the Aging Department.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. We do have a report on probation items. President Judge West has approved the requisition for a Full-Time DUI Coordinator PO2. Again, this is due to the move of Ms. Beerly into the position, another position in the probation office, also for the Register of Wills. And the sheriff, we have items here for note. The Register of Wills and the Clerk of the Orphans Court has approved the Personnel Requisition for Full-Time First Deputy in her office. And also, the sheriff has approved the Personnel Requisition for Full-Time Deputy Sheriff Airport Security Officer Two. Moving into the non-personnel items, we're going to have, we're going to start with capital projects. And we have a change order in the courthouse remodel project. We'll turn it over to Margaret.
Yes, thanks very much. We've briefly talked about the need to pave the entire parking lot at the rear of the courthouse. The original contract contained an order to pave two parking lots to make sure that those parking lots are ADA accessible. But upon further review and assessment of the parking lot and the fact that there's been a lot of heavy equipment in there, it hasn't been repaved in quite some time. The recommendation from the contractor is to do it all at once while the equipment is already set up. We had originally received a bid from the contractor. We sent that bid back, thinking that it was not in line with some of the other paving projects that we've been involved in recently. The quote was a bid back out again with a different company and the proposal is to now pay for an additional $30,000. I don't, $30,199. Thank you. It would be a contract amendment, and I have reviewed this with Betsy. There was a question previously about whether this needed to go out for bid, but because it was already something included in our contract, we're just expanding the scope of it. Our solicitor believes that this is within our ability to add the item if he would choose to as part of our current contract. So the request is to amend our contract with J.C. Orr in the amount of $30,199 to pave the entire parking lot behind, at the rear of the courthouse.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. Any feedback, questions on this item?
It's been explained in detail before. It seems like it's a good idea. I'm in favor.
I'm good.
Okay. All right. We look for a motion then.
Motion to approve change order number 13 with General Contractor J.C. Orr and son for complete repaving of the parking lot in the back of the courthouse in the amount of $30,199.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Margaret, very much. Okay. All right. And our next item is going to be a affordable housing conversation. We will welcome in Betsy Bart to have this discussion about a first-time homebuyer application.
Yes, hi. I wanted to see about getting approval for a first-time homebuyer application where the middle credit score is lower than our required 660. The middle credit score for this family is 614. However, a couple of points that I think are pertinent is the price that they're borrowing is low compared to most applications I get. It is only $117,000. The income for this family, it's a husband and wife and two children, is higher than most of the applications I get coming in at over $71,000. While their credit scores are lower, their total debt is very low on this application. It's only $334 a month. The wife and husband both work. The other point that made this one questionable was he has only been with his current employer for one month. The gentleman works construction and had been with his previous employer for eight years. And I did confirm that the only reason he changed jobs was higher pay and this new employer offered him health insurance. And that was a big factor in why he jumped. I've been, got his verification of employment. They say he will continue on with that job. His wife works as well. But because it is less than in our guidelines, I wanted to see about approval for this.
Okay, thank you, Betsy. So again, you're the most familiar with this in terms of a recommendation. We would ask you for that, considering all the guidelines, all of the parameters. So in terms of your, how you view this, what is your sense?
I view it as a safe bet. I would like to see this one approved only because the income is high, the debt is low, the price of the house is low. It is in Madisonburg, which is probably why the house is a little less than a state college area. They both work. Wife has been in her job for over three years. And again, he was, he's in the same type of employment, construction.
Okay. Okay. So considering all those factors, we do have a recommendation from Betsy to approve this. Do we have any feedback, any comments?
Well, I appreciate her being thorough in the explanation because, you know, obviously there is a, there is a, there is a concern with the credit score. So I think it's, you know, we're doing our due diligence to make sure that we are protecting the taxpayers' money as effectively as we can. And still providing an opportunity for somebody to better their, their living situation.
Yeah, I'll just reinforce what Steve said. If Betsy really feels like this is a good bet and that will be helping out a local family at relatively low risk, you know, I'm inclined toward taking the staff recommendation.
Okay. Thank you to both of my colleagues here. So it sounds like we do have consensus. I would agree. I do think that we need to be mindful, even during, especially during a pandemic, the challenges facing homeowners. And we do have enough money in the fund to do this. And it would be, I think it would show a lot of faith in this family. And again, the fact that they're trying to get to homeownership, though, I would also support it. So we then look for a motion to approve this application.
Motion to approve the first-time homebuyer application with this credit score that falls outside of the approved guidelines for the premises located at 126 Madisonburg Pike in Madisonburg.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that?
None.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The motion is carried. Thank you very much, Betsy.
Thank you.
Moving into some of our election-related items, we are going to start with some positive news on this front. And this is that we were awarded the full amount of our application for the grant from the Center for Tech and Civic Life. And the grant will be going towards the purposes of vote-by-mail, assembly processing equipment, early vote site, or a, as they're saying, a over-the-counter mail-in ballot application, also a ballot drop-off options, also in-person voting at the polling places on Election Day, dropboxes and other related needs. And these expenditures are essentially, must be related to the preparation and planning and execution of the 2020 general election to be held on November 3rd. And we must expend them between the time period of June 15th and December 31st of this year. So any of the, any of the procurements we've made going back to mid-June would be eligible for this, for this grant. So, and I should also note that Betsy did review this, our solicitor, Betsy Dupuy, and she had some general comments. And this grant does allow us to actually sub-grant to other entities, but in our application, we do no such thing. So Center County Government would be spending every penny of this grant. We would not need to do a sub-grant agreement in any, in any way, shape or form. In addition, we cannot spend this grant on anything that we budgeted for the 2020 county budget for elections. And going back and looking at the budget that we amended in February of this year, we really did not, this was prior to the pandemic, though we didn't have any of these expenses in the budget. So we are, we are good to go from that standpoint, but we would still spend down our budget. So we're still going to be using the same amount of funds that we were planning on it. But all these added expenditures, we would not need to be outlining, outlaying costs for because the grant would cover that. And then we have some other items that are going to be paid for by this grant also on the agenda, but we wanted to start with the grant agreement itself. So before we look for a motion, any questions, feedback on this?
Well, Mike, I just, well, go ahead, Steve.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to suggest that I have another couple of ideas for investment from this grant funds, whatever that conversation is appropriate.
Absolutely. We could do it now. I don't think there's any reason not to. This is essentially just to say, we would like the money and we will accept the money and we'll use it within the parameters. I will also say that the flexibility that they're giving us with how we can move money around is terrific. Essentially, as long as the way that we be spending the money would fall under the original application guidelines, we can move that money. And all we would need to do is to email the contact that we have with the DTCL and notify them of that, of that budget line item change. But yes, we can, it's a very, very flexible grant. So what we could do is, we could add our two cents into just approving it. And then we could have some further discussion about other items you might have.
Thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Higgins, any feedback?
Yeah, for general comments, great job, Mike, by yourself, the Elections Department, Margaret Gray, Natalie Smith. I'm assuming Tom probably helped with this a bit too. So great job. Lot of additional monies coming in to help us run the election and provide even better service to our voters in Center County during a big election. So it's fabulous. I'm glad to hear that the grant's very flexible.
Thank you. Absolutely a team effort, Commissioner. I appreciate that. Thank you. But yeah, if we wanted to entertain any, you know, new thoughts on this, Commissioner Verisham, happy to hear them.
Well, I have actually two suggestions. One would be a vehicle purchase for the Sheriff's Department to help with the, with the ballot surveillance, if you will, or protection. And the other one would be a vehicle purchase for the Elections Department to facilitate all the, all the logistic changes that we anticipate for the election cycle.
Sure. I would be, so in terms of the cost for those, what we did for the, the application is we have all of the gas and maintenance of the vehicles is included in for the current vehicles we have. What I'd be happy to do is I'd be happy to check with our grant contact to see if those would be allowable expenditures for the vehicles. So I'd be, I'd be more than happy to do that. And then we can, we can talk about it at an Elections Board meeting.
Thank you.
Absolutely. You bet.
Would we, would we have the availability to try to use vehicles purchased from Penn State for that? Or is that just add way additional complexity?
Sure. So the vehicle, the vehicle that would be used by the ballot retrieval team is a in-kind vehicle that, that we receive with, with in-kind funds through Dave's office. The sheriff's vehicle, I think Brian is going to be using a different vehicle. It's going to, it's going to basically be, you know, just a vehicle that's available and an individual that's available. However, if we can get a vehicle, an additional vehicle for his, his purposes, you know, I'm not against it by any shape. So again, it would just be able, can we move around the grant at all to find enough money to do that and go from there? So yeah, I will happily check into it, see if we can do that. And Dave is still on the call. So Dave, if there's any, you know, if there's any additional vehicles you see, I know we just did, I want to say, few vehicles from Penn State. You were in the commissioner, you came before us at a Tuesday meeting to do a few vehicles. But if there's any vehicles you would ever see from in-kind at Penn State, feel free to let us know on that.
Yeah, we can certainly look into that in addition to what we just received to, to make sure we have that covered and good for the purpose of ballot collection. to, to make sure we have that covered and good for the purpose of ballot collection in the Sheriff's Department. I can work with Sheriff Sampson and, and try to come up with something to assure him he don't have to take anything out of his daily routine to do this. We'll, we'll look at that and I'll communicate with him about that as well.
I'm not comfortable doing an in-kind arrangement where, you know, those dollars are already, already committed, if you will. Well, no, that's not reimbursable in a, in a true sense. I would much, I would much, feel much more comfortable if we bought new vehicles with, with these dollars and, and approached it from that perspective.
No, I, okay, that makes sense. So as, or I appreciate where you're coming from on that. As of right now, we have the, the vehicle that we're utilizing for Dave, from Dave's Transportation Fleet was an in-kind vehicle. Again, Brian is either using, you know, he's, he's using whatever vehicles available, however he's going to do that. We did just, I, I want to say we did just buy a sheriff's vehicle for Brian, or are we, we are, we did buy it out of the vehicle fund recently, right, Dave? We just bought him a new vehicle?
Well, technically we ended the lease, the three-year lease, and, and now we do own those two vehicles that were on that lease. So in essence, we already had those vehicles. So we're, is he looking to have a marked vehicle for the surveillance of this? Can you, are we aware of that? He wants to have a marked or an unmarked vehicle for the surveillance of the election ballot collections.
That, that would be up to him. I believe that he does need to, I believe any vehicle he uses while on duty, they have a marked vehicle. But again, he was, you know, he, he was going to be able to utilize, I think actually, I don't know if Brian's on the phone here or on the call, but he could always weigh in on that, that, that point. Are you on here, Brian?
The sheriff is on the call.
Okay, okay. Were, were you thinking about doing a, would you have a marked vehicle whenever you have somebody out there with the ballots?
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, it could be marked or unmarked, whatever you guys prefer. I probably prefer marked. The people see us driving around doing it. So they know who we are and we swap, so and videotape or, you know, body cam record.
Yeah. So, so again, I, I'll fire an email off to the grant coordinator from the CTCL, see if we can do a vehicle. That's not a bad idea, Commissioner Dershowitz. If we can get a, we can get a vehicle for our sheriff's office out of this, I, I think we're all, we're certainly in favor of that. But I, I think that they have, their perspective is, you know, yeah, again, it's gonna, it's gonna be up to the grant if we can do it or not. But I will check happily, happily to, happy to do that.
This is good. This vehicle is going to be used daily for, for a number of weeks. And I think it's important that we have a, a fully functional vehicle dedicated for this process, as well as I believe the Elections Office would benefit from having a similar purchase.
Okay, all right. And if you would, yeah, so we will, again, we'll, we'll check on, in on that. Again, I'm happy to do it. Happy. All right. So at the next retire, or I'm sorry, at the next retirement board, the next election board meeting, I can report back to see what we found out. Happy to do that. Um, any other, any other?
Commissioner, if I could add, we will, we will immediately start looking for the potential of purchasing vehicles if approved and see how quickly we could obtain a couple of vehicles for these purposes. And, and I'll have that back as soon as possible.
I would look at an SUV for the, for the sheriff's office, and I would look for possibly some level of cargo van for the Elections Office.
Correct. That's, that's what I would be looking at, yes.
Okay.
We'll, we'll look at both. Yep. We'll look at several options and see what's immediately available. Yes.
Sounds good. Thank you for the feedback, Commissioner, Commissioner Dershowitz. All right, all right. So any other feedback questions on, on the grant at this point? Okay. We look for then a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve the agreement with Center for Tech and Civic Life for a grant award in the amount of $863,828.50.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none? Any public comment on this item before we look for our vote on this? Any public comment? Okay. Hearing none? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. Moving into the next item. So this is, these, all of these items, as we go through the rest of the elections portion, are paid 100% by grant funds. First one is a, a purchase of 20 additional DS200s. And it would include the scanner, battery backup, the plastic ballot box with steel door, paper roll and a memory device. This would also include firmware, firmware and software license and maintenance and support fees and the extended hardware warranty maintenance. These are essentially the same exact voting machines that we have deployed at our precincts currently. We have 100 currently. This would add another 20. And the way that we've formulated this in the grant is for some of our higher turnout precincts, larger precincts, we deploy additional units. In addition, we would have some on standby in case any machines had any hardware, software issues, we could deploy these out on Election Day with our rovers. So again, 100% funded. We confirm with ESNS, Jody confirmed that they will be here prior to election, setup, testing, all of that good stuff. So again, we took action in 2019 to purchase some new units. And this would again bring 20 additional units onto our, onto our supplies. So we'd look for a motion to approve that agreement.
Yeah, Mike, that, that sounds great. Motion to approve the agreement with the SNS.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Okay. Hearing none? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. Next, we have two Model 72 ballot extractors with maintenance. And essentially what these are is they're, they're what they say they are. Opex developed a hardware solution that essentially helps to open an envelope up and remove an item from the envelope in a very ergonomic, simple to use fashion. And they've basically just rebranded this model to be able to use, be used with ballots. This will help us in the 2020 election. If we would have any issues with the envelope opener that we currently have that we use for the primary election, this would serve as a backup. In addition, we could utilize this in case something would happen, whatever would happen, and we would need to open up ballots in a more timely fashion. On Election Day, we would have these on standby and could even utilize them as well at the Penn Stater. So the total is $62,410 for the, for, for the unit. So one unit is only about $30,000. And this also includes the maintenance. And again, it's about $2,800 for each unit for maintenance. And again, it's 100% grant funded. We, Opex can also deliver this prior to the election. Julie Lutz had confirmed that with us. So we look for a motion for these two Opex units.
Motion to approve the contract with Opex.
Second.
All right. So been moved and seconded and just in mention, the, these Opex units or the unit we use in the primary, the 306S envelope opener, same company. So we, we really, we, Opex is, it's good brand. So we're, we're happy with them. So, all right. Any further discussion on this item?
None.
Okay. Hearing none? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. Last piece of equipment or electronic equipment, I should say, is the purchase of two MCT68 milling and cutter letter openers. And these are from Pitney Bowes. And these are smaller units than the one that we purchased in the primary. It also has a date timestamper. And one of the things that this would be very helpful with in our Elections Office would be we date and timestamp the ballot, return envelope ballot when it comes back. And so we are typically doing that by hand. And so this would allow us to do a timestamping in a much more efficient process. Also then on Election Day, this could be deployed up to the, up to the Penn Stater, again, as an additional backup in case any of the units went down up there. In addition, this can be used as an opener here. It's a smaller unit. So it can be used here in the office to open up applications for mail-in ballot, applications for voter registration, and any other needs the Elections Office would have. So it does, and it's again, a more portable, smaller unit, easier to operate. So this would be a contract with E. Thomas Brett Business Machines, again, 100% grant funded.
Yeah, sounds good, Mike. Motion to approve the contract with E. Thomas Brett Business Machines.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Last but not least, a non-electronic item, go to old fashioned, just wooden, wooden screws and nails. This is a, this would be a mobile ballot holder or blank ballot storage unit with 120 slots. The contracts with Remodelers Workshop, they built the ballot, blank ballot holder that we have back in the Elections Office right now. This one would essentially just be a mobile one. And we'd be able to utilize this at the Bryce Jordan Center with the office up there. But it also would potentially be a good replacement, maybe in the long term for the one that we have here, where if we would need to move that to offices in, in the, you know, just from a transportation standpoint, it might be a little bit easier. It also gives a few more slots. This one currently has 100, as we have more precincts. This gives us another 20 precincts, excuse me, for the future, if we'd ever need to expand. So again, we, we had that in the grant for another one of these. And so we'd be using $4,300 for a custom-made one from Remodelers Workshop, just right up the road from us. So look for a motion to approve that.
Yeah, great. Great to see we're using a local company. Motion to approve the contract with Remodelers Workshop.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. We have about eight minutes left remaining for this one final item. This is related to the 2019 Statements of Financial Interest. And Natalie Smith has done a lot of work. She does a lot of work currently to compile these, make sure they're turned in. The records are up to date. And so she just did a, kind of an overall perspective of where we're at as we end the 2019 year. And so Natalie, if you'd be willing to give us an update on where we stand and some, any actions we may, may, may need to take in coming out of what you found out.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. So the 2019 Statement of Financial Interests are typically due in May each year. And it is reporting on, so it, as an elected official, it would be reporting on the 2019 year, you're submitting it in 2020. So it's reflecting back onto the previous year. So we send these out every year. They go to all of the elected officials, department heads. Employees make financial decisions or recommendations to the board on behalf of the county. So our correspondence was sent out in February of this year. Again, elected officials, employees, department heads, also some of our authorities and commissions receive them as well. So the correspondence was sent out and then the follow-up letter communication was sent out. It also addressed that the Ethics Commission had extended the deadline from May 1st, 2020 until July 15th, simply because of COVID-19 and the pandemic. So at this point, my recommendation would be to, we're closing it out. We've received the majority of them. We need to report back to the State Ethics Commission, the names of the individuals who have not responded to request an enforcement of non-filing. We need to submit their name, position and last known address. And I have provided the board with a list of the employees and their positions.
Okay. Thank you, Natalie. And we appreciate Jason and the Controller's Office had prompted us just to see what the status of those were. And coming out of that discussion, we, we wanted to do a little bit deeper dive into this. So in the, in the email that Natalie sent out for this meeting, she had, she had reached out with those, that information. And so I'm fully supportive of going through it forward with this, with Natalie's recommendations. I think she was very thorough with this. And we wanted to get the feedback of the full board to see how to proceed.
Is the requirement, this reporting requirement something new? I don't recall it in the past. Maybe it's, it's my, just not my recollection.
It is not new. This has been the state law. I think the difference this year from previous years is that we have not always submitted names to the State Ethics Commission if we've missed somebody's application. So we, we've been remiss perhaps in not sending that on. We are actually as a county entity, required to turn these names over if people have not submitted to us. And I, as Natalie said and Mike said, I, I do think that we've done our due diligence. We've sent reminders. We've asked other people to be in contact. I guess the only thing we could do would be to make a personal calls to everybody before we submit their names. But, but yes, this is not a new requirement. Short answer, no.
I, I would recommend that we make, we, we, if it's a department that we deal with routinely, that, that we ask them to contact whoever it is that needs to be reminded. That would be my first, you know, before we take definitive action. But I have no problem with the action itself. So whatever we need to do, I will, I will go with the will of the board.
Yeah, and it should be stated as well that what we do is Natalie, Natalie sends on our behalf a letter every, every February-ish. And so she had sent one out February 25th to everybody, basically just saying, you, you need to apply. Or I'm sorry, you, you need to, you know, submit your statement. She, she includes a application, all that good stuff. We have ours, I know, in the Willabang building, hand delivered in our inboxes here. And so the vast majority of people, vast majority of people comply with this and do it. And I think it's just us following through with the requirement. And again, appreciate our controller bringing this to our attention. So I'd be certainly in favor of us sending an email to some of the folks who are currently a part of county government, just saying, we're, we're about to do this. We just wanted to give you a final heads up. We're going to be sending this, you know, you know, mid-October, we're going to send this, but we just want to give you one final update. And then Natalie could do a refresh, refresh of the names. I, I'm just putting, putting a date out here. If we would say October 16th, if we don't have, you know, it by then, on, on October 19th, on Monday, we're going to be sending the names. But for anybody who's left county government, I think, you know, I, I would not support tracking them down, finding it out. You know, their information, I think just, you know, going forward with that. But people who we're currently working with, I agree, Commissioner. I think it's a good point. Let's try to reach out to them and go from there.
Sound good.
Yeah, that, that sounds good to me. If we, if we have a valid email for anybody on the list, let's send them a notification, give them a date certain by which we have to pass this on to the Ethics Commission. You know, if you notify people, my goodness, three times plus, they really should have done it by now. So yeah, let's, let's get those emails out and proceed.
So not to belabor this, there are 31 people on the list. There are several people who either have left office or resigned. They may not be clear on the fact that they're still required, as was said earlier, our solicitors pointed that out to us. So we'll do one more round of reminders.
Okay. And I want to correct the record. I have my information incorrect. I believe that we did speak with the Controller's Office about this and just might have touched base with them. But this was an initiative from the Commissioner's Office with Margaret Gray and Natalie Smith. But this was an initiative from the Commissioner's Office with Margaret Gray and Natalie Smith, who were leading this and brought this to our attention. So my memory is incorrect. So want to, want to correct the record, make sure that we're giving proper kudos to Margaret and Natalie. So, okay, good, all right, good conversation. Well, again, we'll reach out one last time, go from there. Any final discussion on the 2019 Statements of Financial Interest conversation? Okay, hearing none, we will return to the agenda and we see that we have no other items. We have a retirement board meeting that's beginning right now, so we do need to get to that. And if there's any other items, we can always, or there are no other items, but we look for a motion to adjourn at this point.
Uh, Executive Session, I need to report no executive sessions previously, but to ask for a brief executive session on a legal slash security issue.
Okay, it, it, just in terms of the retirement board, is it possible for us to do this after that retirement? Could we do it after the retirement board?
I believe the sheriff's on the call. We could. I think it's pretty brief, but I don't want to hold up the retirement board. So it's your, your choice.
Okay, well, yeah, let's try to regroup after the retirement board. Just, I just don't want to, we just don't want to keep those folks waiting. Okay, no executive sessions to report. We'll look for a motion to adjourn the Board of Commissioners meeting.
Motion to adjourn the Board of Commissioners meeting at 11:01.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Thanks, everybody. Have a good day.
Thank you. You too.